When the Apple Watch tells me it's time. Good evening and welcome to the September 15th, 2020 Lone Tree City Council meeting. We are going to wait till 7:05 to allow public to connect to our meeting. While we're waiting, I'll run through some of the organizational elements of tonight's meeting. So attendance at our meetings in support of social distancing requirements and based on space limitations in our building, the city is limiting physical attendance at public meetings to only essential staff, applicants, and elected officials, and will continue to provide access to public meetings via electronic participation. All attendees are wearing face cloths. I words are jumbling tonight. Face cloth coverings when entering and exiting the building and within six feet of another person. The city also implements symptom monitoring measures for attendees such as temperature checks and completion of the city's facilities health screening survey before entering the meeting. Entering public comment during our virtual meetings. Public comments can be made under the public comment portion of our agenda. There are three ways to submit public comment. Comments that were submitted in writing prior to the meeting will be forwarded to city council and included in the official meeting minutes. If you would like to ask type a public comment during the public comment portion of our meeting this evening, click Ask a Question in the sidebar of the virtual meeting and enter your name and address in the message window along with your public input. Your name and comments will be forwarded to city council and included into the official meeting minutes. If you would like to speak directly to council using your telephone, please indicate that in the Ask a Question box and submit your name, address, and phone number. You will receive a call back from city staff to hear your public comment. All public comments should be directed to the city council, and we will ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Again, we are waiting till 7:05 to officially begin our meeting this evening to allow time for the public to connect virtually. While we're waiting for the official meeting to begin at 7:05, the screen indicates the ways you can provide public comment during our virtual meeting. There are three ways. Any comments submitted ahead of time in writing will be communicated to council and be part of our official record. You can type in the Ask a Question box and type your question in, and that will be forwarded to council and also included in our formal minutes. And if you would like to participate using your phone, please type your name, address, and phone number, and you will receive a call back from staff, and they will connect you to us via telephone for during the public comment portion of the meeting. You can ask your question live. Good evening. Welcome to the September 15th, 2020 Lone Tree City Council meeting. Again, we're starting at 7:05 to allow time for the public to join us virtually. If you'd all now please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There are no amendments to the agenda. It's adopted as published. Any conflicts of interest from council?
None.
Great. Public comment. Again, this is the time for people for the public to comment to council on items that are not on our agenda for the evening or scheduled for a public hearing. Just as a reminder, council may not respond to your comments or questions this evening. Rather, we will take comments and suggestions under advisement, and your questions may be directed to appropriate staff person to follow up with you. Any comments that were submitted in writing have will be forwarded to city council and included in our official meeting minutes. If you would like to submit a question or a comment this evening, you can do that in the Ask a Question box on the sidebar of our virtual meeting. Please include your name, address, and type in your question, and it will be forwarded to council. If there's anyone on the law that would like to speak to us directly via the phone this evening, please include that in the Ask a Question box with your name, address, and phone number, and council, excuse me, staff will call you so you can speak directly to us this evening. I'm going to pause briefly and review with our city clerk if we had any requests for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see any requests for public comment.
Okay. While we're waiting for those potential public comment, we're going to move on. I'm going to go through our announcements, and I will check back in. So coming up for the city of Lone Tree, and again, more information can be found at cityoflone tree dot com and lonetreeartcenter.org. The COVID community testing at the Lone Tree Art Center is every Monday from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. Visit the city website for more information. Spark Alliance Visual Art, the Lone Tree Art Show will be presented virtually Thursday, September 17th at 1:30. Again, that's a virtual performance. Buffalo Bill Experience is scheduled for Sunday, September 20th at 1:30. Passport to Culture and at 4:00 p.m., Four Center Friendly, and that will be taking place at the Lone Tree Art Center main stage. Again, that's Sunday, September 20th. The community next community blood drive taking place at the Lone Tree Art Center is Wednesday, September 23rd from 11:00 a.m. to 3:45 p.m. Please visit the city website for signup information. I will touch base again with our city clerk to see if anybody has requested to comment.
Still no request for public comment.
All right. Well, I think we've given ample opportunity. We're going to close the period for public comment, move on to the rest of our agenda, which includes our consent agenda, which is the minutes from September 1st, 2020 regular meeting, claims for the period of August 25th to September 8th, 2020, the July 2020 Treasurers Report, and Resolution 20-23, a resolution approving an amended intergovernmental agreement between the city of Lone Tree and Douglas County regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program for federal fiscal years 2021 through 2023 administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Any questions on consent? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to Community Development, 8.1, Ordinance 20-06, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 17 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code Concerning Subdivisions. This is second reading, and Rashana Floyd will be presenting to us this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. We meet again. I will try my very best to keep this brief, but I will go over the slides briefly in the interests of public review. So tonight, we have before you the second reading of the revisions to Chapter 17 for Lone Tree Municipal Code subdivision section. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. All right. So the revision summary, again, a legal review of all language. We are updating our penalties and enforcement, removing exemptions, including an FAA navigation notice, cleaning up the structure and processes, and adding a reference to the landscape design guidelines within the right of way and security provisions for such landscaping. Next slide, please. Discussion recap for our various study sessions is that we consider landscaping in and along the public right of way to be a public improvement here in Lone Tree, and we want to ensure that we can protect that and that we can guarantee that and that we have some design standards for those particular improvements. With that, we would also like to review and approve those landscape improvements and plans and perhaps a tracking component so that we can ensure maintenance, bless you, is provided for in a timely manner and in line with the plans as approved. Next slide, please. The benefits of the proposed code revisions is that we believe it presents a fair application of code for both small and large developers, that they are treated in the same manner. We believe it is transparent and predictable, easy for developers to understand and to apply, that it is efficient, it ensures a better integration with our master development agreements, and that it is effective. It is easier to track relative to the issuance of building permits and thereby reduces error. Next slide, please. As proposed, we are providing a menu of options for the guarantee of landscaping improvements. One option is for the provision of a traditional security in line with all other improvements that we see with our subdivisions. And then we also have the option for providing essentially a trigger for landscaping so that we would have a guarantee in lieu of financial security for our single-family detached subdivisions. That would be triggered by a percentage of building permits issued. And then we also have a guarantee for our single-family attached and our commercial developments, which would be triggered by a certificate of occupancy following an approved site improvement plan. Next slide, please. Regional comparison to show where this proposal would put Lone Tree on the spectrum of our neighbors. It puts us resting comfortably in the middle. We are ensuring and protecting that we have sound development in this city, and we are also providing flexibility to our developers and to the city in its review. Next slide, please. Are there any questions of council on the subdivision regulations and the ordinance?
So you referenced you would make it quick. I think you have tried to make it quick. I think it was probably me asking a lot of questions on this, and I think you'll be happy to hear I have no more questions, and I want to thank you for your very thorough job on this, but I want to look to council to see if any of the rest of you have any other thoughts on this. Again, we appreciate the multiple presentations. I think the document is better for it, but I'll look for a motion from council then if there are no questions.
I move to adopt Ordinance 20-06 and Ordinance Amending Chapter 17 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code Concerning Subdivisions on second reading.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And then kind of a companion document to this is Resolution 20-21, a resolution amending the city of Lone Tree landscape guidelines for public right of ways. And then we'll move right into this, Rashana.
Fantastic. Right, if I may have the next slide, please, Jay. Thank you. All right. Just a quick visual, you have seen this before, but to orient everyone to the discussions that, again, we have had on this document many study sessions ago. When we are referencing landscaping in the public right of way, and we are referencing gateway and landscaping tracks, this is the type of landscaping that we are referring to. Medians within collector and arterial roadways, entryway tracks, and landscaping tracks that may be identified on a subdivision plat by a developer. So there are three separate components. And again, when we are talking about the right of way, we are talking about all new and expanding right of way in collector and arterial roadways. Next slide, please. I will give a quick recap and revision summary because you have the full document in your packet. Essentially, the purpose for updating these is, one, to clarify the lands to which they apply. We understood in reviewing the previous document that the language needed a little bit of improvement so that we were being very clear as to exactly what lands these apply for our developers. So we cleaned that up with the help of our legal team. And one of the other components that we cleaned up is clarifying specifically what is a standard, what is required of our developers, what is not negotiable, and what is a guideline? What is just an example of how we can guide really nice aesthetically pleasing and easy to maintain landscaping within these areas? And so, again, with the guidance from our legal team, we were able to do that. So as you read through this document, you will see standards are referred to specifically in reference to pedestrian and traffic safety. So we're talking about visibility distances, site triangles, those components. And then guidelines are more specific to knowledge from our landscaping realm and input from our zoning enforcement officer as to which trees and which plants do well and which scenarios, and the overall character that we're looking for here in the city. Then we also refined the application and the review processes. That was another area where we realized, because this is a document that that is really utilized a little bit by Public Works and also by community development, we wanted to refine that. So again, we are being very clear with our developers. When you have this development and this component in your plan, here are the guidelines and standards that you should refer to. When you have your plans ready, this is how you submit them. This is exactly how the city is going to review them. They're going to be filed here, and we can follow up with you. Next slide, please. Were there any questions on the document that arose?
Questions from council?
No.
We know how much time we spend on landscaping, so this is an important issue. It is absolutely a city asset. I think people compliment the city, and also when it doesn't quite meet up to par, we hear a lot about that, too. So I think this is good work and setting the stage and making things cleaner and clearer for the future. So seeing no questions, I will look for a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-21, a resolution adopting the city of Lone Tree landscape design guidelines and standards for areas in and along public rights of way.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Again, Rashana, thank you very, very much for the good work on this. All right. Moving on, administrative matters. This is a public hearing on Resolution 20-22, a resolution amending the city of Lone Tree budget for fiscal year 2020. I am opening the our public hearing, and we will have our staff presentation by our finance director, Uli Neerling. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Slide please. The reason why we are presenting the budget amendment to you is really due to COVID, due to impact of COVID-19 on our budget, with the intent to present a realistic budget, which is not the case with the adopted budget that we started the year out with. Looking at the impacts on our budget, it's really due to a few, a few changes in behavior in regards to.
Just a few. Or the world just kind of turned on a dime. But yeah, I appreciate your positive spin on that.
So we're seeing impact on consumer behavior across the board, as well as consumer spending with the shift towards online shopping. So a lot of the all nonessential businesses were ordered to close for multiple months throughout the year. Certain businesses had to close permanently or as a result of COVID-19. Some of our neighboring communities weren't impacted as much as we were, which had possibly other, or they had other revenue streams that help offset the shortfall specifically on sales tax, for example, a property tax, or even it's a taxation of groceries that stayed steady throughout this period. Even in the article from the Denver Post, they mentioned that in Colorado losses were truly concentrated in communities that are reliant on regional outside spending, which is the is the case for Lone Tree. And then with continued uncertainty in future months, we're recommending to move forward with this budget amendment. Slide please. So the impact again is reduced revenue across all funds, all of our funds, as well as an adjustment on the expense side via cuts and savings that have been identified, as well as a recommendation to use the working reserve to balance the budget. Slide please. As you can see in this slide, we're comparing our 2020 tax revenue compared to our original budget, and the columns highlighted in gray are our actuals, so January through June. You can see that January and February, we're tracking right along our expectation in terms of budget, and then the impacts of COVID in March, April, May, and even still in June are drastic. Again, the aforementioned uncertainty for future months and even into 2021, you can see our forecast, we're still forecasting drastic revenue reductions in future months. So to focus here, this is the showing the impact that we are anticipating on the general fund due to COVID-19. And if you focus on the 2020 adjustments column, we're forecasting a revenue shortfall of $9.7 million. We have identified $8.7 million in expense savings and expense cuts, which still leaves about a million dollar of a net deficit that we're recommending to use the working reserve for. Slide please. The expense savings and cuts are made up of operational cuts of $1.8 million, hiring freezes and furloughs of $600,000, and capital outlay and capital project cuts of $6.2 million. And for more detail on the next slide, operational cuts include the deferral of RECO purchases, reduced city events, reduced scope or completely canceling those, reduced IT cost, deferring the zoning code update that was planned for this year. And these are just some examples. This is not an all inclusive list. The capital cuts include probably the biggest one, the Lincoln Avenue project, then the traffic signal upgrades that were proposed for this year, as well as the reduction and temporary suspension of the Link Shuttle Service. As I mentioned earlier, we're seeing impacts due to COVID-19 across all funds. So the impact on our special revenue fund, initially when the art center had to close, we were able to assign staff to some of our COVID-19 initiatives, which qualifies for CARES Act funding reimbursement and brings the revenue stream or an offsetting stream back into the art center. However, once we opened up the art center again at a restricted capacity, we had to identify and reduce costs significantly at that point. So unfortunately, that had to include furloughs that we had to move forward with. The impact on the budget itself is reduced revenues of about $800,000, reduced appropriation of about $1.3 million, and a reduced transfer from the general fund of $880,000, which includes them using the accumulated fund balance that they have accrued in 2019. Slide please. The impact on the debt service funds are the for the arts and cultural facility debt fund specifically, we're looking at a revenue shortfall of $620,000. We've also sort of reduced the appropriations in that fund to cancel the projects, the capital projects for the art center of $450,000. The impact on the Recreation Improvement Debt Service Fund is a reduced revenue of $420,000. Due to the prudent financial management in the past, we're able to cover our debt service payments, though, and for for this year and for the future year, even with the worst-case forecast that that we're looking at right now. And that is really due to that accumulated fund balance that has been accumulated over the years that gives us that buffer right now. Slide please. Since we're already working on the budget amendment, there's a couple of items that we're bringing into this amendment as well. And the first one that I wanted to outline here is just touring up the starting, the beginning fund balances across all funds, and that is really just to tie them to the 2019 ending balance, the actual ending balance, the cap. There's no impact on revenues or expenditures there. And then secondary, making adjustments to the Rich Gate Parkway widening projects, and those are truly just timing difference on how expenditures came in in 2019 and how reimbursable costs came in in 2019. Some of that shifted into 2020, so just adjusting that for the timing difference. Again, here, the overall project cost is staying the same. That is not changing. It's just the timing that we're accounting for. So here again, if you just want to look at the adjustments column, we are decreasing reimbursable costs by $2.8 million since we received those in 2019 and not in 2020, and we're increasing the expense side by $2.5 million as we did not expend those funds in 2019, and that shifted into 2020. With that, any council questions?
Thank you. Questions from council?
Been through it.
Again, we've spent hours on this with you, so I would be shocked if I did see a question this evening. I think unfortunately, we have spent more time on the budget this year than I think we have in the two years prior, and we're not finished yet as we we are just starting the real process for 2021. So I want to really say a huge thank you to my partners on council for the time, extra time that you have devoted to looking at the city finances this year. I also want to say a huge tremendous thanks to the city staff and Uli in particular for shepherding us through this very, very challenging year. No one could have forecasted it, but as you alluded to in your comments, I am very pleased that we did have working reserves and a debt service fund that really we had planned for something. We didn't know what, and I sure hope it never happens again, but I'm glad we did, we're very responsible in our planning before. So I don't have any questions either, just a lot of gratitude to the my council, my partners at council, but also Seth, to you, our deputy city manager, Kristin, and the finance department, and all the great staff that have contributed on every level to respond to this crisis. And I think I know I speak for council, but when we talk about furloughing for staff, nobody runs for office with the intention of ever having to tell somebody they've got to take a reduction or a cut. And I think it's a very hard thing for all of us to do. So we very much appreciate our staff in the city of Lone Tree and that this in no way reflects how much we rely on you, how much you, how hard you work, and how much you mean to not just us, but to the residents and the businesses that you serve. And we look forward to a renewed consumer confidence in Lone Tree's retail and restaurants as we've started to see it come back. So I'm hopeful for the future, but we've got to take these steps today. So with that long-winded, I'll look for a motion.
Mayor?
Yes. Oh, it's a public hearing. I'm going to ask for public comment on this now. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any requests for.
But I, but we must do it so. Yes. So there's, so yeah, you could have provided those while I was making my long-winded spiel. I apologize. I should have done that in the opposite order. So since I didn't, we will, as we go through this process, if there's a public comment that comes in, please interrupt us, Jay. We'll move forward now and look for a motion. So I think you have a motion slide for us.
Yep.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-22, a resolution amending the city of Lone Tree budget for fiscal year 2020.
Second?
All right. Any any public comment coming in, Jay?
I'm not seeing any requests.
All right. We're going forward then with the vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Uli.
Thank you.
Okay. Now comes the time for council comments, and I think in light of the comments I just made, I think that was a lot of what we all wanted to say and acknowledge. I did want to mention one other important thing that happened over the weekend was an acknowledgement for Bill Robertson, who is a Lone Tree resident and a one of the dynamic individuals who was really a regular at our council meeting for a number of years. He is a stalwart in the community. He was honored this weekend by his HOA and Metro District and Heritage Hills with a beautiful plaque in front of one of the walking paths and in a bench there. And there was a socially distanced group of about 20 people that came out to pay respects to Bill, to honor his service to his HOA, to the Metro District, to the city of Lone Tree, and also to share some nice memories of him with his wife and his daughter who were able to attend as well. And I think we all know and loved him in unique ways, but he was the poet laureate of the city of Lone Tree. There was not an occasion, whether it was a mayor being sworn in, a new council being sworn in, the Schweiger Ranch dedication, probably the creating, the opening of the art center or the pool where Bill didn't have a beautiful poem to honor the occasion. And we miss him greatly, and just as we miss all of you who are not able to participate with us in person at our council meetings. But he was a treasure, and I am so grateful that I had the opportunity to. to honor him with his family and his friends in Heritage Hills over the weekend. So Bill is yet one example of the great folks that we get to represent and we get to serve. And I think we have certainly been through our challenges here in 2020 in the city of Lone Tree, but I would always bet on Lone Tree. I'm very optimistic for our future, and I know we will rebound and recover stronger than we were. So with that, we're adjourned.